All right. Good morning, Housing Authority Board of Directors, and over to you, Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome, everyone, to the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors?
Certainly, Director Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners is now meeting this regular session as the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors, October 1st, 2024. Director Roper?
She's present.
Present.
Director Savara?
Present.
Director Willie?
Here.
Director Rogers?
Here.
Director Treese?
Here.
Director Fai?
Present.
Director Harrington?
Here. Thank you. The next item on the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share your thoughts on housing and homelessness before the Board of Commissioners or Board of Directors, excuse me. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
I did not see one specifically for the Housing Authority, but I will open up to anyone in the auditorium. If you wish to provide comment for up to two minutes on any Housing Authority item, please stand up, get my attention, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room, any members online via Zoom, which should provide public comment to the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Director Harrington?
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of the minutes for the September 3rd meeting and a resolution and order approving the 2025 annual flat rent increase for public housing. What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
And a second from Director Roper. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Next, we'll move on to the first of two action items. And with that, I'd like to invite our executive director of the Housing Authority and the assistant director up to give us a brief staff report.
Good morning, directors. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers, and I am the executive director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. As you may recall, we came before you earlier this year after we got the HUD approval to dispose of 60 public housing homes and right before we notified those residents of our intention to sell those properties and relocate those residents. Our HUD approval was based on the assumption that we would sell the properties on the open market at fair market value over the next one to two years with the sales proceeds going back into public housing. At that time, this board suggested that there could be opportunities for affordable homeownership or involvement by our community-based organizations in these sales to best support the current residents and to provide opportunities for future first-time home buyers. You seem to support the notion of a phased set of sales to allow our current residents or other low and moderate income households a chance to become first-time home buyers before we offer the homes to the highest bidder. Since that time, we have asked HUD for some modifications to our initial submission, and they have accepted these modifications, which are embedded in this framework we're presenting to you today. The ultimate goal is to not just replace these 60 homes, but to increase the number of affordable homes in Washington County with the use of these proceeds into a robust pipeline of more efficient, more integrated, and more financially sound affordable housing. Our goal is to create over 100 new affordable units. Also, since that time, we've built out our team. With me is Assistant Director Chen, who will present on our Section 18 framework and actions we are asking of the board today. We also, since that time, have hired a Section 18 coordinator, Melissa Daly, a public housing manager, Matthew Folen, and a real estate manager, Lisa Verone. Much credit goes to them. Next slide, please. Thank you. Next slide. Today, we are going to remind the board where the current 60 homes are located, provide a status update on our work to date, and propose the disposition plan framework. Then we will present how this framework works through a selling diagram and examples. It's a little bit complicated, since there could be several doors or pathways by which someone could become a first-time home buyer through our three tiers of buyers. We will conclude with next steps and requested actions. This is a map of where all of the 60 public housing homes are located. As you can see, they're scattered across the whole county. Many of them are single fam-- most of-- they're all single-family homes that are geographically dispersed, but the majority being in Beaverton and Hillsborough. Of the 27 with Beaverton address, the 25 are actually in an unincorporated Aloha. And of 24 that with a Hillsborough address, nine of them are in unincorporated Aloha. Vast majority of them are over 40 to 50 years old, making them haven't really received any significant renovations since that time. We also have seven that are right now sitting vacant, hence why we are looking forward to moving quickly. Now I'll turn it over to Assistant Director Chen.
Thank you, Molly. For the record, I'm Jill Chen. I'm assistant director, and I use she/her pronoun. Just a quick update about activities or work. Since our last presentation in April, we have met with our community-based organizations, working with low and moderate income buyers, many of them working directly and some of them working indirectly in the purchase of homes. We've also met with our local jurisdictions, Beaverton, Tigard, and Hillsborough regarding their home ownership programs. We've also received feedback from them regarding our framework. As Molly mentioned, we also received clarification from HUD on the program, in particular about our desire to do a tiered sale instead of everything through the public market on an MLS listing. In addition, we also have issued a relocation consultant, RFP, and have received confirmation of those bids, and this is one of your action items for today's agenda. And finally, not on that update is, we also met with our Housing Advisory Committee last week to go through the same framework and receive some good feedback from them. And I should mention, they vote unanimously to approve. And we finally are coming to you for the disposition plan. Next slide, please. A couple of words about our framework principles. What we're trying to do is balance a number of goals. In particular, the first one is to create affordable housing opportunities for low-income households in our community. We all know this is one of the highest homes, areas where, you know, homes are of the highest value. Second is to fund, as Molly mentioned, more affordable housing. In our pipeline, we have over 1,000 units that need to be developed. We're also seeking to balance our recommendations with values of equity and transparency and aligning it with the One Washington County principle with the intent to align our proposal with the Office of Community Development's home ownership program. In addition, we're also seeking replicability, simplicity, especially in administration, and community input with our partners. Next slide. So this slide is a little crowded, and I apologize. It's the guts of the framework. As Molly mentioned, we have three tiers. The last tier, Tier 3, is on the market, so we're not necessarily focused on that, because our focus is primarily on Tier 1, which is the existing residents, and Tier 2, which is working with our community-based organizations. A few items on here that I'd like to first clarify. Number one is buyers, and we apologize, we used the wrong phrase. It should not be legal residents, it should be permanent residents. The second we'd like to highlight is the income, which is we are only allowing those residents who are-- and families working in Washington County up to an area median income of 100% area median income. That's the same as what are the residents right now in the units. Third is the selling price. This is what we will count as our subsidy to our buyers, and that we are recommending is a 10% discount from the current market value. Currently, it works out to be out $46,000. Fourth is the subsidy. In exchange for the subsidy, we are asking for or we're requiring an affordability restriction. The subsidy is forgiven over years. Currently, we had originally proposed 30 years for full forgiveness. After discussions with our Housing Advisory Committee, even though they approved all of our framework, they asked us to reconsider shortening that. Since the Office of Community Development, their down payment assistance program is almost twice as much as the $46,000, and therefore it might make more sense for us to halve the time of affordability subsidy forgiveness, since our amount is half the amount of OCD. In addition, we are also requiring that any prepayment on a loan, that our subsidy is recaptured, meaning gets paid back to the community-based organization so they can further advance affordable housing. The goal is to leverage other opportunities for support, namely from the state, the federal and philanthropic resources, in order to have deeper affordability, meaning folks who are in the lower income have the opportunity to purchase. Next slide, please. So how does it all work, and what does it really mean in terms of who gets the benefits? So as we move from the left to the right, the left is the first tier, that box of Tier 1, current residents. They are getting the 10% discount, and you'll see there's three boxes for Tier 2, and those are from the different types of opportunities we have understood is available in the market with our community-based organizations. These are through the Down Payment Assistance Program, the Permanent Affordability Program, and the Rent to Own Program. Units which are not sold through Tier 1 and Tier 2 will not have any discount. They will also not have any restrictions on income or affordability, and those will be sold in the market. Next slide. So what does it look like for the, you know, the Tier 1 sale? We have already been notifying our residents both in this year, once we've received the HUD approvals, in summer and-- no, actually, in spring and summer, about the opportunity to purchase, and have informed them about the opportunity and the assistance through Bienna Star and other community-based organizations. The individual households can take advantage of any private lender or choose to work with a home buyer through CBOs. Based on current income of our existing 53 households, we expect less than 20% to actually be able to purchase. And the reason is the average household income of these residents are very low. The average is under $35,000 a year. However, each resident will have a tenant protection voucher, similar to housing choice vouchers or Section 8, so they will continue to not pay more than 30% of their income when they move. We are also hiring a relocation consultant, which we hope you will approve, to help the residents find another place to call home, help with the move, the packing, and any deposits needed. Residents are requested to make the purchase decision by December 31st, 2025, and complete their purchase by March 31st, 2026. Next slide, please. Only after the residents have vacated or have indicated they were going to be vacating, then these units will be offered to Tier 2 purchases. These will be pre-approved by a request for qualifications that we intend to issue after your approval for the framework. Our intent is to release vacant homes in small batches, so it will not flood the market. CBOs, community-based organization, and CBO-supported households will submit bids by specific deadlines based on the time they come onto market. Preferences will be applied to households who are mortgage-ready or have pre-approved mortgages, and CBOs supporting permanent affordability. If no preferences are awarded, or there are multiple preferred bidders, then the selected bidder will be through lottery. Next slide, please. So in terms of next steps, we are hoping to inform the residents again of the ownership opportunity and provide details of this program once this is approved. Then, we will begin with the relocation process with the consultants, finalizing our approach with HUD, and working with our tenants. We will solicit the RFQ request for qualifications from our community-based organizations, and once the CBOs are qualified, we will inform our residents, so they will know who is in their community working with them. Finally, we will also solicit a real estate brokerage, an escrow entitled company, to process the paperwork as required by HUD. We will also have an updated broker's opinion of value, as well as assess-- we will continue assessing the housing units for sale readiness. Next slide, please. So today, our request-- oops. Our requested action from the Housing Board of Directors is to approve the Section 18 disposition plan in accordance with all legal and regulatory reviews and requirements. And the focus here would be on 100% developing affordable home ownership program. The definition of our eligible buyers, meaning the income, including the requirement for Tier 2 buyers to be 100% area median income or less, and for the discount of the 10% discount or subsidy for the Tier 1 and 2 buyers. We're also hoping you will be able to recommend an amendment to our action, our resolutions and order, that will allow us to shorten the subsidy period as the Housing Advisory Committee has requested. And finally, for you to approve the relocation contract for DDB Consulting LLC. Any questions?
Yes, I have a clarifying question. On the amendment that the committee asked for, currently, the subsidy is defined as minimum 10 years, partial forgiveness to 30 years for full forgiveness. And if I understand you correctly, you wanted to change the-- or you're suggesting the change from 30 years to 15, but is there a recommendation on the 10?
The recommendation we would suggest is five, so that at year 5, 20% of the subsidy gets forgiven. We understand that most households live in their home between five to maybe 15 years. Even 15 is a little long.
Do all the commissioners understand what that request is, or all directors, sorry? You two, Director Roper, do you follow that? Okay, great. Okay, are there any other director questions or comments?
Just a clarification. When we met yesterday, I said I wouldn't bring this up, but I didn't hear exactly the nuance. You're going to make certain that there isn't any issues with Oregon Local Budget Law? You're going to check that? You're going to check to make certain that we minimize any federal or state tax impact by checking with IRS regulations? And I think you have a good plan on how we might be able to do that.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll check with our attorneys to make certain that there's no gifting provisions under any state or federal IRS rules. I don't mean to be disrespectful. I don't-- HUD doesn't set IRS rules, so I mean, them allowing something doesn't preclude other taxing agencies from looking at this. So it's a great plan. I'm all for it. I just think that we need to look at those specific items to make certain we're clean.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. We will indeed. Oh, sorry, Director Rogers.
Thank you. So yeah, really appreciate the framework. You know, a couple of things I wanted to just highlight from, you know, our conversations and some of the work that you all have done that I've really appreciated. So I think that this work is really in a long line of thinking about our public housing stock, right? And I think this is a great opportunity to think about what we need in terms of like the resources we have in our public housing stock to move forward. And I think I love that you're thinking about the assets here as both a tool for improving homeownership opportunities, as well as working with those CBOs. I think that piece has been really, really helpful to see you working with the CBOs that we have across the county and thinking about that RFQ process to promote homeownership. I think too often, you know, we haven't seen homeownership opportunities in sort of the full breadth of options for folks, moving from, you know, public housing, lower income into, you know, stabilizing opportunities for households and then into homeownership. So this is really exciting to see kind of that full breadth of options for folks, and definitely excited to see how many are able to take advantage of it, work with those CBOs, and be able to move into that opportunity. I also think it's a really good opportunity to think about where our commitment around race and racial equity can come into play here, too, because we know homeownership historically in this country has been so-- has been a means to ensure that communities of color and other groups haven't had access to wealth-building opportunities. So I think this is a small opportunity to be able to work with CBOs that have deep ties to some of those communities that historically haven't had access to some of these programs, and be able to offer that to them. So I'm really excited about the results of that RFQ, so excited to see where that comes pending board approval here. I think another piece that I just wanted to flag is that the fact that you're reinvesting the proceeds from the sale back into the affordable housing development also is really in line with the mission, I think, here, too. So the fact that you're hoping to build another 100 units so that we're not, again, losing that stock, I think will be really critical here, because we need both homeownership opportunities in this county, and we need a lot of opportunities for low-income renters, as we all know well. So yeah, really excited about the work. Also, really appreciate that you're engaging with the Housing Advisory Committee and really hearing them. I mean, that is a group of bona fide experts in this field that we have, you know, amazing access to, and I really appreciate that you're engaging with them, not to check the box, but to really hear them out and respond to their feedback and then make changes. So I'm definitely in support of the amendment that they proposed here, and really excited about moving this forward.
Thank you, Director Savara. Directors, are there any other questions? I have one. It didn't dawn on me to ask yesterday, but it's come up today. So for the discount, what pool of cash will that funding be coming from?
It's forgone revenue, so it's not like we are fronting the money and doing the discount from there. It's just essentially they're lowering the purchase price, so we would be getting less revenue than we would have otherwise if we had sold at--
Yes, I understand that at the point of sale, but after five years--
Oh, what happens if it's sold prior to the forgiveness?
Okay, all right, great. Otherwise--
Oh, yes, recaptured. Go ahead.
Yes, so if it's recaptured and the household wants to sell and moves in year 3, they are actually required to pay back the full subsidy. It's not coming to us, but it will go to a community-based organization to further more affordable housing. So the idea is to recycle as much of the funds as possible. Thank you.
Understood. Okay, so we have a suggested amendment, but first, we need a motion to adopt the framework, and then, from there, we can amend the motion. So moved. Do we have a second? Okay. Now, we-- do we have a motion to advance the amendment to shorten the subsidy time period to five years and 15?
So moved.
All those in favor of the amendment, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The amendment passes seven to zero. And now to the amended motion. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. And next, we have a resolution to award the bid contract for the resident relocation services from DDB, I believe. Did I say that right? DDB Consulting Services LLC. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve that.
Do we have a second? Oh, thank you, Director Roper. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. All right, next, we move on to the second public comment period of the Housing Authority Board of Directors. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and speak to the Housing Authority for up to five minutes in individual. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Director Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up. Mr. Feek, would you like to?
Housing-related, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, and in particular, Housing Authority Director Michael Savara. I've been here-- I'm chair of the West County Citizen Action Network. I've been here before, making public comment before you about many different issues related to housing and the need to have effective housing in the county, and how you, as county commissioners, have worked together, even though you come from different, maybe, political points of view. You've come together, coalesced, and are making decisions for the best residents that live in Washington County. I much-- we, WC Can, much appreciates your collaboration and working together for the betterment of people that need housing. In particular, I really appreciate you making a motion and accepting approval of disposition 18, the framework, and also the other one, the award, the bid. And I appreciate your comments that you made, Director Savara. And I think that you explained very well what the plant-- what the housing-- what the people in the county are doing to support your mission, because we have very qualified staff in the county that are working hard to accomplish what you, as commissioners, want them to do. So I'm here to support your actions in the Housing Authority and you as Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Clerk Moss?
Would anyone else in the auditorium wish to provide public comment to Housing Authority for up to five minutes? If any raised hands coming forward. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment to the Housing Authority on any housing topic for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Ayla, please. And then this will conclude it, because there is no one online.
Thank you.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
A new name for you this morning. Sorry, I'm not used to that. Ayla Hoffler, Banks, Oregon, here today to speak. I didn't know this was happening this morning, but it's great. And what I have to say about this as a land use consultant in four different counties in the state, I find it interesting that you seek always to get affordable housing for people in this county, and yet, the hypocrisy is your land use laws that you deem have to be followed by the state actually stops people from living on their land. And people came to Oregon from the East United States in wagons. Half of them died. They came here to build a life. It's called the pursuit of happiness. It is one of the rights in our in our country, and this state has taken it away from humans. I have clients every day that have inherited two, five, 10, 20-acre parcels from their grandparents. It's paid for. It's affordable. And I bring an application up here to the land use department, and the people are told they can't live on their land. This has to stop. You can't talk out of both sides of your mouth anymore. out of both sides of your mouth anymore. People need to live on their own land. They have a right to do it. It's the pursuit of happiness. It's life and liberty. And as a home rule county, you need to do something about this as a housing board or whatever hat you need to wear to fix this problem. Every lot in this county should be allowed to have a home. Period. Thank you.
Madam Director, that concludes the testimony on this section.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we have Board of Director announcements. Do we have any such announcements for today? No? Well, I want to thank Director Savaro and Director Roper for joining us today for the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. And with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. We have a motion from Director Roper, a second from Director Savaro. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. The Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting is hereby adjourned. And in a moment, once the logistics are set up, we will convene as the Washington County Board of Commissioners.
All righty, welcome, Board of Commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome to the October 1st, 2024 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services, is now meeting this regular session, October 1st, 2024. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Vice Chair Fai?
Present.
Chair Harrington.
Here. All right, we have all four commissioners present today. Before we move on to public comment, I we do have several people who have signed up in advance of the meeting to talk about elections. I just want to let you know that our agency has been notified appropriately of errors from the Department of Motor Vehicles here in our state, and that resulted in non-citizens mistakenly being registered to vote. There were approximately 300 records for which Washington County elections had incomplete citizen information. None of those individuals has cast a ballot in any election here in our state. The work of our county elections department is falls under a mandated service, both from the county adopted strategic plan update, as well as Oregon revised statutes and rules that are put in place by the Oregon Secretary of State. If you're looking for further information about the Washington County Strategic Plan Update, you can find that on the county website, washingtoncountyor.gov. In addition, I just want to highlight that later on today's agenda, under Section F presentations, we will be having a presentation for a general elections update. So stay tuned. You might be interested in that. So Clerk Moss, our first public comment opportunity is an opportunity for members of our community to to come and share their thoughts with the board for up to two minutes an individual for a total of 10 minutes. Clerk Moss, who do we have?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. So we have seven people signed up here since we'll go, and we'll go in order of signups. So I'll call you up two at a time. So Kim Rice and Sandra Nelson, you are up first.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Kim Rice. I am a U.S. citizen and a 10-year resident of Washington County. In 2022, I was a nominee for our state legislature, Senate District 18. Since elections are on the agenda today, I thought it appropriate to talk about my own experience with our elections process. As a candidate, I observed various aspects of the election process and to be as knowledgeable and as competent in our elections as possible. What I learned, to my dismay, was that I was completely removed from the ballot watching process. In a separate room with just a few viewing screens rotating every few seconds, ballots were too far away from cameras to verify anything, and it was impossible to follow follow the process flow. When I tried to observe signature verification, I found screens that weren't working or not turned on. They were when they were operational, some signatures obviously didn't match but were accepted anyway, and we observers were not allowed to challenge them. Elections office personnel tried to be helpful and answer questions, but I left feeling completely disheartened and removed from the elections process. Any idea that we citizens can participate in this process is a fallacy. When I learned that the Oregon State Attorney General admitted in a letter filed with a conjunction of a Washington County lawsuit that our election machines have wireless accessibility and are hackable, I discovered that despite Elections Office best efforts, our elections are not safe, secure, or transparent. The lack of electronic transparency erodes citizen confidence in the elections process and in elections results. Elections are our most valuable asset as citizens living in a free society and they belong to the people, not to elected officials or to bureaucrats.
We'll need to move on.
One second. This lack of transparency must stop, beginning with the current election. As county commissioners, you can make the elections safe, transparent.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Ms. Nelson, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Sandra Nelson. I am also a U.S. citizen and resident of Washington County for 40 years. And first, a big thanks to our county's election division manager, Dan Forrester, who invited all of us to come here today to hear his presentation. Actually, he didn't. But we are here to support him. Commissioners, in early June, as a likely nominee for state representative, I emailed our Secretary of State and our county elections division manager, Dan Forrester, asking one simple question. What is the process you will have in place to ensure that only U.S. citizens will be voting in our upcoming election, as our federal and state constitutions require? Our Secretary of State never responded to my email, but Dan Forrester did promptly and professionally with grace and patience. He basically assured me that the county elections division was following all the laws, but he himself had limited access to important databases and that it was the state elections division that has more investigative tools at its disposal. His statement seems to have been confirmed when our state recently made national headlines, as you referred to, Chair Harrington. Our Secretary of State admitted that hundreds of non-citizens were registered to vote in Oregon. I don't know why she admitted this just at this time, after five years of not investigating the issue, but maybe recent warning letters from Judicial Watch, America First Legal, and United Sovereign Americans had some effect. Those letters, two of which are attached to this statement, I hope you have it there in front of you, make it clear that both quote "state and local elections officials have the authority and duty under federal law to obtain citizenship information about registered voters," unquote. With or without home rule, you commissioners have the authority to maintain accurate voting rules, regardless of the decisions of our state officials. We ask that you give Dan Forrester the clear directive and support he needs to thoroughly investigate.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. We do have your letter and all the attachments. Thank you. Who's next, Clerk Moss?
We have Kevin Pat and George Everly, followed by Mary Choplis and Dale Feek.
We're going to stick within the 10 minutes.
Certainly.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Pate, and I'm a U.S. citizen and Washington County resident for 30 years. Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have a dire emergency on our hands. Non-citizens may be voting in our current election. Recent media reports that more than 1,200 non-citizens were accidentally registered by the DMV probably grossly minimizes the situation. Since 2015, aside from the DMV, people have been able to register to vote online, by mail, and in person at the Elections Office. In every case, only self-attestation is required. Oregon House Bill 4133 passed in 2022 may matter worse by allowing people to register with just the last four digits of their social security numbers, ensuring that no registration can ever be traced to an individual. The bill also allows third-party entities, including NGOs and working with non-citizens, to electronically register individuals to vote. The completed registration card before you requires information identical to the online portal. Which county employees have the job of ensuring the valid citizenship status of Washington County voters? State Senator Brian Boquist reported that 68,000 inter-voter registrations were set aside statewide for review for suspected non-citizenship. The numbers keep changing. Reviews take time, and the election is upon us. Every fraudulent vote dilutes the vote of a true citizen and violates our constitutional rights to self-governance. As Washington County Commissioners, you have the duty and responsibility to use home rule to disconnect from the broken centralized system, to call emergency, and to direct the Elections Office to compare the voter rolls against the federal HAVB database to eliminate all non-citizens
Thank you, Mr. Pat.
and eligible voters. Thank you.
Morning. My name is George Everly. I'm a U.S. citizen, retired naval officer, and resident of Washington County for 27 years. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm here today to talk about UOCVA Uniformed and Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act, which allows military and other citizens to vote from overseas. During my service, I was grateful to be able to vote using paper ballots. However, I believe the current system is highly susceptible to fraud and imminent threat to our current election. Primary reasons are: online registration process relies on self-attestation only. A person can register without an Oregon ID or a social security number. If they have a social security number, the last four digits only are required, and so it's untraceable. They can claim a voting residence that they have no current association with or property that is not even a valid residential address. They may have no current ties or intentions of returning to Oregon. They can vote online, making hacking possible, and there is no chain of custody or transparency for electronically submitted ballots. Aside from military or government personnel overseas, this system appears to be open to fraud, potentially allowing individuals with nefarious intent or foreign actors to interfere with our elections and invalidate the votes of our citizens. I and my fellow citizens want to work with the Elections Office to gain access to retrieval, signature verification, duplication, and counting of these electronic ballots. Since these voters sign a secret ballot waiver form, privacy should not be an issue. Further, we'd like to access all supporting documents with all fees waived. As county leaders, please ensure we are provided with these necessary tools for accountability, beginning with the current election. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss.
The fifth person per the time limit, Madam Chair, will be Mary Choplis. Mary?
Good morning. My name is Mary Halkeopoulos. I'm a U.S. citizen, lifelong Oregonian, and resident of Washington County for 23 years. Like you, I'm an elected official. Over the course of many years, the state that I love has become unrecognizable, a laughingstock of the nation. Many people and businesses have left the county and state. Articles on social media regarding Oregon's plight often include comments blaming our own citizens, saying, "Well, that's what they voted for." Did we? After the 2020 election, I saw everyday people from across the nation, some at great peril, provide powerful testimony regarding the voting anomalies they had witnessed in their own states. The chaos that resulted from national implementation of vote by mail forced me to look at our own voting system with fresh eyes. Since Oregon was the first to implement vote by mail, I began to question the veracity of our system and felt compelled to investigate, to find out for myself what was going on in our state. I wasn't alone. Many dedicated Washington County citizens from various backgrounds and political parties have worked tirelessly for three years to study our system. These citizens include data analysts, educators, medical professionals, entrepreneurs, and everyday moms and dads. They have spent thousands of hours and thousands of dollars obtaining documents and conducting research relevant to our elections. Our citizens found a host of vulnerabilities and anomalies in several areas of our election system, including voter rolls, ballot printing, vote by mail, chain of custody, signature verification, machine tabulation, election observation, legislation, and UOCVA. You need to know we have found evidence of fraud. Some of us have approached several of you in an attempt to get a work session so we can present our findings, to no avail. It's your duty to learn what we've uncovered and to take the necessary steps to ensure Washington County has fair elections. I speak for many here, asking for a work session during which we can present you with our findings.
Thank you, Mary.
and recommended solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll be moving on to our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of 13 items. One item is approval of minutes. Two items are from Clean Water Services. One item from Housing Services. One item from the District Attorney. Two items from Health and Human Services. Three items from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks. And three items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes?
Move for approval?
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor of approving today's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to appointing members of the Property Values Appeals Board. Today, we have a recommendation to approve the appointment of Beverly Mosher, Anthony Mills, and Eric Squires. What are the wishes of the Commission? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you to our three community members for serving on this committee. It is one of the few committees that has a very contained time period for meetings. Next, we'll move on to proclamations. Today, we have two different proclamations. The first one is to proclaim October 2024 as National Community Planning Month here in Washington County, brought to us by our Land Use and Transportation Department. Please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and members of the Board. My name is Erin Wardell, and I am the Assistant Director of the Department of Land Use and Transportation. With me is Reza Farhoudi, one of our senior planners, who will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, community planning can help manage this change, provide better choices and more equitable outcomes for people who live, work, and play in our communities. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all people to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community and involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and community members who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month, whereas an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to healthy and sustainable communities, and how planners can lead communities to an equitable and resilient futures, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of professional planners, planning commissioners, and other community members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Washington County, and whereas we recognize their many valuable contributions and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this day, the 1st of October 2024, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Community Planning Month in Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to proclaim October 2024 as National Community Planning Month in Washington County. Be of the proclamation that you have read for us today. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioners, for passing this proclamation unanimously. Would you like to join us for a photo op?
Yes, I think we're planning on doing that.
Great, let's do that.
As any of our staff, as part of the Land Use and Transportation organization, please feel free to join us. And I am here to help balance over here.
You guys could get to the center. That would be great.
You're the one that fed our prawn on the table today.
If you guys want to see a couple of these things, we've got a big group right here and no one over here.
Is everybody?
CJ trying to get in the door.
Okay.
We've got one more person coming in.
Quickly, quickly.
I'm going to need you guys to squeeze in just a little bit more. All right. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Take a couple. Everybody smile. One more. All right, thank you.
All right, well, next, we have a second proclamation of today, and it is to adopt
World Homeless Day proclamation. Oh, welcome. Hello there, Ms. Armstrong. Marshall, sorry.
It's okay.
Kim Marshall. See, I wanted to change your name on you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair.
Moving you up in the alphabet. How's that? Anyway, go ahead, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Molly Rogers, and I'm the Director of Housing Services here in Washington County. In our day-to-day work, we spend so much of our time focusing on our programs, our approaches, our processes needed to end homelessness in our community, and this is life-changing work. But sometimes, it's important that we pause and remind ourselves of the why behind this work, and to continue to educate ourselves and our community on the reality of homelessness here in Washington County, across the region and nationally. As you are aware, the work of ending homelessness must be done in partnership, so I'm thrilled to have one of our key partners with us, Kim Marshall. Kim started this work in 2003 in one of our family shelters in Washington County and has been one of our longtime partners here as the Executive Director of Portland Housing, Portland Homeless Connect, and most recently serves as our Chair of our Homeless Solutions Advisory Council. The council represents a diverse group of folks who bring a mix of lived and professional experiences to the table to help us figure out what makes our homeless services work more efficient and effective, more trauma-informed, and more aligned to the needs that they see in our community. So Kim is a true champion for our community members. She serves in a 50-person read this proclamation today.
Thank you, Molly, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Rarely am I nervous speaking in public, but there's a whole bunch of people behind me that I was not prepared for. What I am excited about is it's a group of people who are advocates for something, and just as we are. Molly brought up remembering your why, and this sits on my desk, to every day do that. Remembering our why. This is a practice we hold true at Project Homeless Connect. This sign is on my desk. Our why is our friends at our access center looking for food and connection, a hot meal, showers, and laundry. Our why are our friends we engage through outreach, meeting them where they are and providing basic needs on the streets. Our why is John, a gentleman in shelter who is wheelchair-bound because he lost both of his feet to frostbite last winter. Our why is the over 200 friends we have housed since 2021, including Betty, who celebrated her 90th birthday in May, the same week she moved into housing. She found refuge in our non-congregate shelter until connecting with one of our housing case managers. At Project Homeless Connect, we have so much gratitude for the voter-approved SHS funding that allows us to do this work. We are so privileged to hear the stories of our homeless friends and walk, walk, sigh them on their journeys to self-sufficiency. We will honor them on World Homeless Day, and every day, we will work to make sure that they are seen, heard, and valued in our community. Proclamation in honor of World Homeless Day, October 10. Whereas each year since the 10th of October 2010, people around the world observe World Homeless Day while working to prevent and end homelessness and alleviate the suffering of those experiencing it. And whereas here in Washington County, we understand the importance of home and recognize the travesty experienced by hundreds of people in our community who don't have that safe, stable home base. And whereas homelessness is defined as the lack of a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, and includes living in shelter or transitional housing. This includes things like places not meant for human habilitation, being involuntary doubled up with family or friends, staying in shelter or transitional housing, or living in a hotel or motel paid for by a third party, and/or fleeing or attempting to flee domestic and have no other resources or supports. And whereas homelessness can happen to anyone. Many in our community are one unexpected medical event or job loss away from losing their housing. And whereas homelessness disproportionately impacts Black, Indigenous, and people of color, the LGBTQIA community, and youth exiting foster care, and as such requires the response of Washington County to center our most vulnerable and marginalized community members with equitable and inclusive solutions. And whereas Washington County recognizes the most recent point in time count demonstrates that 773 people were experiencing homelessness in Washington County, and over 650,000 people were experiencing homelessness nationwide. And whereas tremendous strides have been made here in Washington County to make homelessness brief, rare, and non-recurring, including serving over 10,000 people last fiscal year with homeless services, while still recognizing there is more work to do to ensure there is a path for everyone in our community to stable housing. And now, therefore, be it resolved that on this first day of October 2024, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 10, 2024, as World Homeless Day, and encourage all residents to reflect on the importance of home and lift up the work of our community-based partners who are doing the incredibly important work of getting folks back into stable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt this proclamation as read? So moved. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Would we like a photo op? Yes, wonderful. Thank you.
Hey, Kim, gotta bring this down.
So any of our staff members who are working in our housing department or office of community development, would you like to join us?
Is that a minute? Okay, I'm gonna take it on three.
So next, we're going to move on to public hearings, and this is related... Oh, excuse me, sorry, presentations. Another important aspect of our work. So I would like to invite Mr. Joe Nelson as well as Mr. Dan Forrester. Mr. Nelson is the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records, and Elections, and Mr. Forrester is our Elections Manager. Please come and inform us a little bit more, and I'm hoping you'll also be speaking to the podcast series.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, as you stated, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records, and Elections. With me today is Dan Forrester. He's the Elections Division Manager, and our purpose is to share some of the amazing work Dan and his Elections Team have been doing in preparation for the upcoming November general election to ensure safe, secure, accurate, and transparent elections, and it's the process and Dan and his team have been working very hard with. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
Thank you, Joe. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. Once again, for the record, my name is Dan Forrester, Elections Division Manager, and we're very pleased to present you this update on planning and preparations for the upcoming November 5, 2024, general election. Do I have control, Kevin? All right. So just to review the agenda, I'll start by giving a high-level overview of characteristics of the upcoming election, and then talk about the contests that are on the ballot, both candidate and measure contests. Then we'll talk about what we are doing to ensure that the people and process in this election are kept safe and secure. We'll talk about what we are doing to preserve community trust in elections, and then we'll look at the timeline of this election with some deadlines and milestones, and finally wrap it up by sharing our plans for results reporting in the upcoming election. So a high-level overview of characteristics of the upcoming election. Of course, we all know that this is a presidential election year, and presidential elections are characterized, first of all, by high turnout. We are projecting between 80% and 85% voter turnout in this election. And for comparison, the November 2020 election had 84.7% turnout, and the two previous presidential elections were also both above 80%. So 80% to 85% turnout means about 330 to... I'm sorry, 330 to 340,000 ballots. Washington County has, right now, approximately 400,000 registered voters. And a high proportion of those ballots will be returned on Election Day, so I would not be surprised if we saw over 100,000 ballots to process on Election Day alone. Another characteristic of a presidential election is the excitement and the strong emotions that go along with it. Of course, every election is exciting, but a presidential election even more so. And our staff are preparing to engage with voters at our front counter and on the phone and online, who may be experiencing stronger emotions because of the presidential election. So the contests that are on the ballot, of course, at the top of the ballot, we have President and U.S. Congressional Representative. Just to remind you, Washington County has parts of Congressional Districts 1 and 6. There are also statewide contests on the ballot, Secretary of State, State Treasurer, Attorney General. There are two state senators in Washington County, open contests, and also all of the state representatives are on the ballot as well. There are three judicial positions on the ballot, and then all of the cities in Washington County, with the exception of the City of Beaverton, have city contests on the ballot as well, mayors and council members. The City of Beaverton is the exception. They conduct their elections in the May primary, and so all of those elections have been decided at this point. Finally, rounding out the candidate section of the ballot, we have Soil and Water Conservation Board Directors. On the measure side, we have five statewide measures. Three of these are legislative referrals, two are initiative petitions, and then we have a number of local city measures: Hillsborough, Forest Grove, Sherwood, Lake Oswego, Portland has a number of measures, and River Grove. We have one school district that has a property tax measure on the ballot, and that's the Tigerd Twalton School District. That is the only property tax measure on the ballot, and it affects about 62,000 voters. As elections administrators, we are always thinking about the safety and the security of the process and the people. So the people being the voters, the candidates, and the election workers, both the permanent staff that work in my office, as well as the temporary workers, the members of the community that join us for a large election. We are always assessing our elections infrastructure and seeking continuous improvement in security. So this means our Elections Office, as well as Dropbox locations throughout the county. We have 21 ballot drop sites in Washington County, and we were lucky enough recently to get some federal grant funding to replace our aging drop boxes with new, highly-secure drop boxes that are purpose-built for ballot collection. And I want to just take an opportunity to thank our partners at the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization for helping us secure this grant funding, and also our partners in facilities here at Washington County who helped us prepare six brand-new, secure drop boxes and then deploy them out in the field in a very short window of time. Currently, all of the replacement has concluded. The last one to be cited was the box in the Public Services Building parking lot, which is actually a new location. We previously had a box in the Law Enforcement Center parking lot, but because of a long-term construction project at that facility, we had to find a new location, and we were lucky enough to find a place that works well for our purposes in the parking lot of the Public Services Building, just yards from where we are right now. And I want to thank, again, our partners in facilities and leadership at Assessment and Taxation for making that happen again in a very short window of time. It was a really good example of cross-departmental partnership, collaboration. We have an ongoing collaboration with our local law enforcement organizations. This would be the Washington County Sheriff's Office, as well as the city police departments, as well as federal partners. And we have onsite support planned on and around Election Day, both from Washington County Sheriff's Office, as well as... County Sheriff's Office as well as private security. And this is an effort to make our Elections Office safe, secure, and inviting for the voters and the workers that are going to be so busy processing ballots on and around Election Day. Also, as Elections Administrators, we are intent on doing everything we can to preserve community trust in elections. Luckily, in Oregon, we have a secure vote-by-mail process with many double checks and quality control points. We pride ourselves on the hard work that we do at the county level in ensuring that our voter registration rolls are accurate. I want to just address the issue that you brought up, Chair Harrington, regarding the non-citizens who are mistakenly registered to vote through an error at the DMV. We're very happy that Washington County was able to make all of the necessary corrections regarding those recently discovered registrations, inactivate them, and ensure that they would not be receiving ballots for the November election. I also want to emphasize the point that you made earlier, which is that none of the 295 records of these individuals show that they had cast a ballot in Washington County. Each election, we conduct robust logic and accuracy tests to ensure their tabulation systems are counting ballots correctly. We also conduct an administrative hand count after every statewide election in order to further verify the accuracy of the tabulation system count. The tabulation system we use is certified at both the federal and state level, and it is kept separate from external networks and the Internet, which follows elections' industry best practice. And contrary to some claims, it does not have wireless capacity, nor is it hackable. We spend a lot of time in the Elections Office working to proactively dispel myths, dis, and malinformation about elections, including conspiracy theories about the elections process. We do this via many channels, from outreach events in the community, to earned media, to campaigns on social media, and the point of these efforts are to share correct and accurate information proactively with the public. I want to just take a moment to thank our communications team, in particular Maria Gomez Martinez and Darren Averman, who have done a lot of work recently in creating accessible video content for our website and social media that does a very good job of showing what the elections process is actually like behind the scenes and humanizes election workers who are members of our community. And also, the podcast effort as well. So this is a recent project that Maria has initiated, and very excited to be part of that effort as well. And finally, it is key to preserving community trust to be transparent in everything we do, and the Elections Office endeavors to be transparent about everything. We offer tours to members of the public who are interested in seeing our facility, both in and outside elections windows. We will take meetings with members of the public who have concerns or questions about the elections process, and of course, we have an observer room that people can use to watch all aspects of the elections process, including real-time signature verification and ballot adjudication. I want to just talk about the timeline for this election with some deadlines and milestones. So the first two milestones here have passed, the September 5th candidate and measure filing deadline. That's really what kicks off the election season in earnest in the Elections Office. That's when we know what's going to be on the ballot, and we can begin designing the ballots. Not too long after that deadline, we have to have ballots printed, because on September 20th, that's when we send out our ballots to our military and overseas voters. We have another deadline coming up soon, on October 7th. That's next Monday. That's when we are going to be mailing our ballots to voters who are temporarily living out of state but not overseas or in the military. October 15th is the deadline to register to vote in Oregon, so per Oregon law, one must be registered and in the database by the voter registration deadline 21 days before Election Day in order to participate in the election. Voters who have inactive registrations may update their registrations after this deadline and participate in the election. 20 days before the election, on October 16th, is when we mail out ballots to all of the voters living in-state, and that is really when we start to see most of our ballots coming back into our office. Although I will say that since we sent out our Uokava, or Uniformed and Overseas ballots on September 20th, we have already received a number back, about 166 so far. So we're already receiving ballots back for the election. November 5th is Election Day, and the office is open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Of course, at the 8:00 p.m. deadline, that's when we can begin to release the unofficial results. November 12th is our postmarked ballot deadline. Ballots that are postmarked on or before Election Day and received within one week of Election Day may be accepted, as long as the signature matches and counted. But if we receive ballots back after this deadline, no matter if they are postmarked on or before Election Day or not, we cannot accept them. November 26th is three weeks after Election Day, and that is the ballot challenge deadline. This is the deadline for us to cure ballot challenges caused by voters who don't sign their ballot envelope or who have a signature that doesn't match what we have on file, and we can cure those challenges up until this date. And a few days after is our certification deadline, and this is when the election really concludes. I want to review also our results reporting plan. So as I mentioned, at 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, we can begin to release the unofficial results, and we will update those results twice more that evening at 10:00 and then again at midnight, and then each Friday until certification. At the discretion of the Board, this reporting schedule may be modified, and the interval can be decreased between results reporting. And the results are certified on December 2nd, 2024. This is when the final and official results are posted. We certify the results to the state and also to our participating districts. In this case, we have the school district, Tigerdewalton School District, and the cities that are participating. We would certify results to them. With that, I just want to leave time for any questions or comments you may have.
Board members. Commissioner Rogers, of course.
I do. Thank you, and thank you for taking my call the other day, Joe. I know that you're a person of integrity, trying to do what needs to be done to make it fair, and all elections are always susceptible. To that question, I asked you a couple of questions I think might be important today. One of them is that there's a certain amount of discussion whether there could be algorithms in the programs where, for instance, if I were running against you, every one of your votes, you got one vote, every one that I got got .9 or .95 or .8 or whatever number we wanted to mysteriously associate with that. Can you comment on that in a minute? Let me ask you my second question, and that is that people like to be able to observe, and the area of observation is not very large. I know you can't go down on the floor, because that would destroy the integrity of the counting, and I appreciate that, but what would you say if 100 people said, "I want to observe"? How would you go about doing that? Would you have a closed TV system, or how would you facilitate that? So those are the questions.
I think since Dan actually works with the counting, the tabulation piece, let's have Dan answer your question to give you the best information on that one.
So Commissioner Rogers, to your first question on algorithms within a tabulation system that might be changing the votes, going against the voter intent on the ballot, do I have that right? So the tabulation system that we use is tested by a certified testing laboratory, and so it goes through a certification process that would catch anything like that. That's the point of those certification processes. To your other question about...
I'm sorry, can you expand on that? Because I've heard claims that we don't have regular certifications, and I...tell me how often that happens for the crowd and for all of us, and is that an annual for every election that we get that, or how often does that occur?
Oh, thank you. So that's a good question. It's actually, what they do is they certify versions of the software, and so our tabulation software is as a version number. This has to go through a testing and certification process. Once it's been certified, it's certified. It doesn't need to be recertified that year. It's considered good from that point on. Of course, the tabulation software companies are always improving their product and supplying new versions of their software to the testing laboratories, and then they go through that certification process. So it's certified at the federal level...
On insulation.
Once upon insulation, and then updates.
Right. So it'll be certified at the federal level, and then also the state of Oregon has a process as well for certification. Washington County is not directly involved in that process, so I can't give you more detail than that, unfortunately. To your other question about interest from observers, if we do have 100 people that showed up at once, we wouldn't quite have room for them in our observer room. So in that case, we would have to talk to the group and try to figure out some equitable way of sharing the space and staggering the observers. I will say that it hasn't happened yet since I've been here. Of course, if it happens this election, we will make provision to make sure that everybody can get a chance to observe.
Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to express my appreciation to Dan and to Joe for being here today, for going through this information. I also want to express my appreciation for your efforts to educate all of us about the election process from the standpoint of tours. The Commission participated in a tour. It's always enlightening to see how all the steps work. I appreciate that. I'm also on the RDPO, Regional Disaster Preparedness Organizations Committee, and I really appreciated your presentation at our last meeting. It was clear, concise, and very professional. So thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for the professionalism that you bring to Washington County. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other commissioners? No? I would like to add to that, and thanking not only the two of you, but all members of our election team for their very diligent work to provide each of us with the opportunity to vote with good, sound information, and for ensuring that we have a sound process so that votes are counted appropriately to rules and procedure. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a big body of work that has been a long time in coming, two different land use ordinances, Ordinance 901 and 902. So we're first going to start with a motion to read ordinances 901 and 902 by title only. Do we have said motion? Do we have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Ms. Courtney Duke-Dreesen, could you please read each of those ordinances by title only?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ordinance number 901, an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area and all community plans relating to development in areas designated significant natural resources. And Ordinance 902, an ordinance amending the Community Development Code relating to development in areas designated significant natural resources.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a staff report, and then we'll move on to the public hearings.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Teresa Cherniak, Principal Community Planner with the Department of Land Use and Transportation. The public hearing before you today covers two ordinances that, as you mentioned, we've been working on for some time, related to the county's program for significant natural resources under statewide planning goal five. The ordinances are a culmination of several years of hard work, both by staff and professional consultant team, as well as a number of community representatives, partner agencies, the Planning Commission, and the Board. You've heard from us throughout the project, and we're hopeful that the ordinances you have before you meet the legal requirements of the state and metro, as well as the policy objectives of the Board. With that, Michelle Miller is the Project Manager, and she will give the presentation.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. My name is Michelle Miller, Senior Planner with Land Use and Transportation. I also want to add that in the audience, we have Kathy Corliss. She's the Project Manager Consultant for this project. We're here to present Ordinance number 901 and 902, Amendments to the County's Goal Five Program for Significant Natural Resources, or the SNRs as they've been come to be known. I want to take a moment to also thank my colleagues with Land Use and Transportation that have worked on this project and these ordinances, from the administrative staff to the communications team, as well as the management team, and you commissioners who have supported the project with your time, insights, and questions. I also want to thank our planning commissioners, who thoroughly evaluated the testimony and weighed the options for the code changes and provided the recommendations to the Board. Finally, I want to thank those in the community that attended the community forums, called with questions, and testified before the Planning Commission. We considered all of the information in preparation of this ordinance. So today's the Board's first public hearing, so we need to briefly summarize the project to provide the context for everyone that may be listening in for the first time about these ordinances. We'll be sharing the project overview and some background on the ordinances. The first ordinance, 901, Amendments to the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the Urban Area and the Community Plan Map Changes and Text Changes for the Areas in the Urban Unincorporated Parts of Washington County. Ordinance number 902 are the code amendments to the Development Regulations for Significant Natural Resources. Finally, we'll be going over the staff recommendations. First, some background on why we're updating the Goal Five inventory and developing new regulations at this time. Since the 1970s, the foundation of statewide programs for land use planning in Oregon has been those 19 statewide planning goals. We are focusing on statewide planning goal five. It requires local governments to identify and protect significant natural resource areas. It also affects other resources like scenic and historic areas, but our focus has been on those natural resources. The Oregon Administrative Rules outline the process for how we comply with statewide planning goal five. We adopted our Goal Five program with an inventory and regulations in the early 1980s, following some older Oregon administrative rules. Since that time, the Goal Five rules have changed, along with an important change in state law. In 2017, the legislature expanded the requirement for land use regulations to be clear and objective when they apply to all housing development, not just needed housing and on all land, not just buildable land. This change in state law impacted our natural resource regulations, as they were found not to be clear and objective and could not be enforced as written. Based on the Land Use Board of Appeals remand and an enforcement order from the Land Conservation and Development Commission, the county undertook a broad review of its Goal Five program, including its inventory, plan policies, and regulations. This work mandated by the enforcement order and the stay culminated in the ordinances before you today. Now on to the project overview. This table shows our project steps, deliverables, and outcomes for how all the required pieces of the Goal Five program will fit together. On the left column are the Goal Five process steps that we went through with this project. The corresponding middle column shows the deliverables for your review and approval, and the column on the right shows the outcome or where the deliverables will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan pending your approval. I'll be talking about the various deliverables in the next few slides. So this project has had a lot of input from the start. Initiated by a group of interested community members wanting to see changes to the county's development standards for significant natural resources, the county has been working on making changes to the regulations for a number of years. With this 18-month project, we involve the property owners and community... With this 18-month project, we involve the property owners and community members early on in the project. We set up a team of technical advisors with expertise and agency interest. Outreach at events and forums with notice to affected property owners early on. Also have noticed that the information about the project has been provided in English and Spanish with a dedicated web pages and materials. Community involvement has really informed the mapping, the draft Goal Five reports, and ultimately, the regulations that are proposed before this board today. We'll summarize the themes from the public input, including the testimony, later on in the presentation. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the Draft Habitat Inventory Report, which is Attachment C in your staff report, or page 337. This map shows the urban area of Washington County, with a tan color showing the incorporated or city areas, and the blue and orange encompassing the urban unincorporated area, or our study area for this project. The blue area, what we call the map refinement area, is where we're doing the bulk of our mapping and analysis internally, and it was part of our original inventory work that the county did in the 1980s. The orange areas, or new community plan areas, are where the cities may have done some Goal Five planning in anticipation of those areas being annexed to cities. We did not make changes to the rural mapped resources, or change the regulations or policies for these areas. The regulations are the same as before, under the original program, and thus are not changes that affect these Goal Five resources as applied to the rural area. One more thing about this particular slide. Our inventory steps began by defining a map refinement area, limited to the urban unincorporated area, consolidating our county and metro mapping. We removed any developed areas. We tested for significance, and that's a detailed review to find that out in our methodology. And we incorporated city community plan data if it was available to us. Our updated inventory includes two habitat types. We have the riparian wildlife habitat, which contains the water resources and adjacent stream embankment, and the upland wildlife habitat, which is further upland from the riparian habitat area, usually those treeed areas that you'll find. This table shows the consolidated process we used to get to the updated mapping, and the new significant natural resource categories that have been created as a result of this process. The column on the left are the county's current three natural resource categories from the original 1980s inventory. The middle column shows the categories in Metro's inventory, which we used through our process, and the column on the right is the resulting new county significant natural resource categories, which will be shown on the maps as riparian wildlife habitat, which is generally the metro riparian wildlife habitat, with some of the county's wildlife habitat that happened to overlap. And then the new county upland wildlife habitat is a combination of the former county wildlife habitat and Metro's Class A and B upland habitat areas that were found to be significant through our methodology process. After all of that analysis and applying the methodology, here are the resulting numbers of riparian and upland wildlife habitat, mapped for the Goal Five inventory update for the urban unincorporated area. For riparian, it's the amount is about over 3,000 acres in both newer and older urban growth boundary areas. There's a total of just under 1,100 acres. About 700 acres are mapped areas that are within the urban unincorporated area that came into the urban growth boundary prior to 2006, and 400 acres in post-2006, or more recent urban growth boundary expansion areas. I'll explain with a little bit more detail in the upcoming slides why that's important. Next is the very detailed report that's required through our Goal Five process, the Draft Goal Five Report, which is Metro's Title 13 Compliance Report and the ESEE Analysis. And that's found on page 427 of your materials. So the relationship between Goal Five and Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan is a bit complex, in that there are special requirements depending on whether the resources are considered regional resources, where Title 13 controls, compared to other resources, where local jurisdictions need to follow the standard Goal Five process, which means we must complete the economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis, AKA the ESEE. This graphic shows how that relationship is discussed in the Goal Five report that you have received. It's part Title 13 Compliance, reported for the regionally significant resources, namely the riparian wildlife habitat for the urban areas, shown in those green boxes, and the orange boxes are for the local resources, namely upland wildlife habitat that was included in the urban growth boundary before 2006. An ESEE analysis is needed for local resources, the upland wildlife habitat, that I will talk more about in the next few slides. So this slide shows some figures based on when the area came into the metro regional urban growth boundary. As a reminder, this is because there's different metro requirements for those areas. This map shows the areas inside the urban growth boundary before December 28, 2005 in blue, and those areas that came into the urban growth boundary after that in orange. Those orange areas are on the edge of the urban growth boundary, and will primarily be developed by cities when they annex, and their development codes will apply. Here's that information summarized. The riparian wildlife habitat and upland wildlife habitat in post-2005 UGB areas are required to be protected because of Title 13, and they're called regionally significant resources within the urban unincorporated area. Upland wildlife habitat on lands inside the urban growth boundary before the adoption of Title 13 are locally significant resources. Some of the significant habitat in the inventory was not required by Title 13 to be protected, although Title 13 allows us to protect the resources. For these local resources, the county needs to follow the standard ESEE process, including So where the recommendations that came from the ESEE analysis are that where conflicting uses are... Is... Excuse me, sorry. Coming out of the Goal Five Report and the ESEE was a recommendation to lightly limit the activities and conflicting uses in upland wildlife habitat, carrying forward these principles. It prioritizing mature native trees and large habitat patches that are close to the water. Where the impacts can't be avoided, disturbance areas should be cited to protect trees with the highest ecosystem service value. We need to provide a clear and objective path for mitigation, and also some flexibility to allow for different site conditions. Support the clustering of residential development away from resources to balance our housing needs in the urban area. And the policies and significant natural resource standards that we'll be talking about shortly, all are based on the ESEE decision to lightly limit development on sites with upland wildlife habitat. Now I'm going to turn to ordinance number 901, which is found in your packet on page 43. These are the amendments to this comprehensive framework plan and our community plans. The CFP updates include incorporating the recommendations in the ESEE into Policy 10, the Significant Natural Resources, and changes to Policy 41 map, the Significant Natural Resource map for areas in the urban growth boundary expansion areas. Those policies include strategies developed that represent the lightly decision, limiting the impacts, as I talked about earlier, and having a clear and objective path, and protecting our regional resources. And also clarifying that the Significant Natural Resource regulations are in the Community Development Code and not in our community plans. In each of the community plans, we remove design elements that no longer apply or were subjective. We clarified that any remaining design elements related to Goal Five resources are intended to just be policy guidance and not development requirements. And then we added a summary of the process that we're going through with these ordinances. We changed all of the community plan maps to incorporate the changes to the inventory for riparian and upland wildlife habitat. So here's an example of a community plan map changes for the Bethany Community Plan, which incorporated the changes of the new Significant Natural Resource categories of riparian and upland wildlife habitat. So between the original filing of the ordinance in June and August 31st, we received requests to make changes to the inventory and maps. Our consultant evaluated the information presented by property owners, and those that met the criteria for removal per the habitat report were indeed removed. You can see that those are proposed in Attachment 1A and A2, and that starts on page 311 in your packet. Now turning to the amendments in the Community Development Code Significant Natural Resource Ordinance, ordinance number 902, which are the CDC changes, and those start on page 205 of your packet. Generally, our Community Development Code standards must provide at least one clear and objective path for development and meet Goal Five and Title 13 as we discussed. On the other hand, rural Significant Natural Resource regulations are not being changed with this ordinance or affected by the changes to Goal Five resources that we're proposing for the urban unincorporated portions of the county. Because they are part of the original Goal Five program with different Oregon administrative rules, so they are not dependent on the clear and objective requirement. And the purpose of the standards include protecting the significant habitat for its ecological function, maintaining and enhancing water quality by limiting impervious surfaces near streams, retaining habitat as a community amenity, and balancing conservation and natural resources with the economic use of the land. Turning to riparian wildlife habitat, those standards are similar to what we have currently. Development is strictly to moderately limited, but some development activity is allowed. And if a development impacts the riparian habitat, clean water services requirements will likely apply. The following activities are allowed, like public transportation facilities, utilities, wildlife viewing areas, and trails, some restoration work, and at least one dwelling unit or a middle housing duplex. Even though these activities are allowed, it doesn't mean that they're not subject to other state or local regulations, like clean water services requirements or Department of State lands permits. So the proposed regulations for upland wildlife habitat will not change what's currently allowed land uses. Development is still allowed. It focuses on tree retention or replacement. It provides a clear and objective path that includes a tree inventory and assigning tree points, and some planting requirements. It includes two alternative discretionary paths to attain the level of tree habitat protection that's identified in the ESEE analysis, and it provides a greater degree of protection for upland wildlife habitat within areas that were added to the urban growth boundary after 2005, which is a requirement of Title 13. There are some exemptions to when the regulations do not apply to activities in the significant habitat area, like maintenance and repair of structures within the existing building footprint, removing trees within the significant habitat, removal of certain trees within this significant habitat boundary, like hazardous disease or dying trees, trees removed as part of a clean water service-approved stream enhancement project, or trees in commercial tree farms and nurseries. Exemptions from the requirements that apply to mapped upland wildlife habitat include construction, maintenance, and repair of public park projects, transportation facilities, utility lines, and mineral extraction on approved sites, and uses and activities on lots that are less than 500 square feet, that contain less than 500 square feet of upland wildlife habitat, or resources on lands designated as high-intensity urban, like commercial, industrial, and mixed use. And those were not included in our community plan maps, which effectively exempts those uses from the requirements. So the draft rules provide a simple process for tree removal in upland habitat for trees within onsite disturbance area, or trees that might be located near a habitable building. If the property owner wants to remove trees outside this area, they must follow the tree retention and replacement requirements found in the upland wildlife habitat requirements. The Planning Commission has been deeply involved in the process from the start, with work session updates, and two of our planning commissioners served on the Technical Advisory Committee to help give the local perspective and help inform the process. This spring and early summer, we held three in-depth work sessions, briefings, and we held three public hearings on July 24th, August 21st, and September 4th. These themes that resonated from the testimony include requested changes to the mapping, property owner concerns about tree removal permits and the economic impacts to their property, concerns that the regulations didn't go far enough to protect riparian and upland wildlife habitat, as well as concerns about limiting development on smaller sites. There's been comments about monitoring enforcement, that the trees need to be planted, replanted onsite, and the Planning Commission discussion was robust, resulting in some proposed changes to the ordinance that I'll speak to in the next few slides. So ordinance number 901, the Planning Commission recommended to the board that you adopt the ordinance with engrossment to include the map changes that are consistent with the criteria used to develop the inventory. Staff agrees and supports this recommendation. These proposed changes are found on page 311. Ordinance number 902, the Planning Commission recommended that the board adopt ordinance number 902 with some changes for engrossment that I'm going to talk about on the next few slides. For the exemptions to the standards that are limited to upland wildlife habitat, the Planning Commission recommended for the board to consider narrowing the exemption for certain activities, like parks, utility lines, and transportation facilities. Staff, however, is recommending keeping those exemption in place per the findings of the ESEE, to continue to exempt these public infrastructure improvements due to the economic value of efficient infrastructure needs, the public purpose that they provide, and the limited capabilities to provide for onsite mitigation, with minor changes to the wording noted here. The other change to the code language recommended by the Planning Commission was to increase the lot size related to the exemption for urban wildlife habitat to two acres in size, so that the lots are... Only lots larger than two acres in size would be subject to the regulations, rather than the half-acre minimum that was developed in the habitat methodology. Staff is also not recommending this change. This would be an extreme reduction in the amount of habitat to be protected, and we feel that this large of a change would require us to relook at the inventory, the ESEE decision, and possible further code changes as a result. We came up with an alternative that would be for a reduction in the tree value points for the smaller infill sites to facilitate infill development on those sites of that Turning to the Type 1 tree removal permits, the Planning Commission recommended an increase in the disturbance area from 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, and enlarge the perimeter area where the trees could be removed through a Type 1 permit, and allow trees close to a wider range of type of buildings to qualify for the Type 1 removal, and then to clarify the definition of habitable. And staff supports that recommendation with some clarifications and specific recommended distances that are outlined in that engrossment exhibit. So regarding the tree retention and replacement standards, the Planning Commission didn't have a recommendation about this, but indicated support for a reduction in the percentage of tree value points on those smaller infill lots that I talked about, if the board did not end up increasing the lot size exemption that they were recommending in A. And we support that recommendation. There also was the issue of monitoring and enforcement, and the Planning Commission thought more work needed to be done in that area so that we could provide... thought needed, more work needed to be done in that area so that we could provide sufficient monitoring and bonding mechanisms to ensure the health of the trees that need to be replanted on the sites. And we support that recommendation. It was a bit outside of the scope of this ordinance, and we're asking that it be considered as part of a work program task. And then finally, there's some additional changes for clarity and that we've included in ordinance number 902, that engrossment exhibit, including some map modification changes. At this time, we'd ask that you conduct the hearing for ordinance number 901 and 902. We ask that you order engrossment of ordinance number 901 as described in the staff report, as shown in attachment A on page 301, and then order engrossment of ordinance number 902 to reflect the changes described in the staff report and shown in attachment B on page 337. And continue the hearing on the ordinances to October 22nd and November 5th, and direct staff to prepare and mail notice of the amendments consistent with the requirements of Chapter 10 of the county charter.
At this juncture, commissioners, are there any questions?
Question, Chair. I apologize if you said it already, but I'm hoping you could repeat it. Under ordinance 902, there is a separation of significant natural resources, that of the UGB versus outside the UGB. Where do we, for the future ordinance that's going to come, where do we in this discussion, how do we document?
You mean the engrossed ordinance?
Yeah, the engrossed, I'm wondering, how do we document the future ordinance that will be seeking to protect the SNR outside the UGB? And then also the opportunity to explore, how do we better plan for transportation around the SNRs? When, like, I'm not looking for an amendment, but it's important to document for future references when we come back to that future ordinance. So what do you recommend?
So the original 902 language as followed, one of the things we did was we set up the, dividing the ordinance between the urban unincorporated area and the rural area, and we kept the language the same for the rural area, which I think is section 422, 20...
20 to 20.
Which we don't have to change.
So it's a series of kind of renumbering at this time. But the state legislature did direct us to make changes from some certain areas in the rural, but have, in the rural area for significant natural resources. But that change is not due at this time. So I think it's kind of out there per state law that we're going to need to make some changes to the significant natural resource requirements to be clear and objective in certain rural land use designations that'll be coming later.
That will be part of future work plans and planning for that work.
Right, and so we can, we'll definitely include that. I think this morning, we talked a little bit about the planning work program that will be coming up early summer of next year. So we will be including discussion of the work that we need to do for the rural area to continue on with the clear and objective standards for that.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, that concludes the staff presentation. So if we could go back one slide. Okay, so Ms. Courtney Duke-Dreesen, is it legal for us to have one public hearing on both ordinances, or do we need to have two separate public hearings?
Madam Chair, you can have the public, a joint public hearing for these ordinances.
Terrific. All right, and with that, I'd like to open the joint public hearing on ordinances 901 and 902. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to us with regard to these two ordinances?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. I'll call you up two at a time. First, we have Leonard Whitman and Andrea D'Amico.
Thank you for your patience with the length of today's meeting. Very full day. You can go ahead and start, Mr. Whitman.
Okay, Leonard Whitman. Been a resident of Washington County for 58 years. Went to school here, graduated from Beaverton High School, and had my entire career still going in Washington County in the high tech. So longtime resident, also longtime property owner, again, for 58 years, owned several different properties. The one in question today has been in our family for that entire 58 years. It is in the riparian zone, and I've handed out something, I don't know if you've got that in front of you or not. Okay, good. So you see two images, one without the riparian zone and one with. And the riparian zone ends up consuming about two-thirds of the property. And you can see half of the house is engulfed by the riparian zone as proposed. I am in support of riparian zone in general. I, you know, my family wants there to be a conservative kind of, you know, take care of the land approach to things. Engulfing the house, as is shown here, seems a bit extreme. We would be happy to talk about what we could do to mitigate this, you know, move the boundary a little bit so that the house is not engulfed. So our proposal would be to have an amendment to what's being proposed in the riparian zone, move the boundary closer to the stream than it is now alongside the edge of the house, so that still maybe half the property would be part of the riparian zone, that would be fine, but the house would not be surrounded by the proposal. So that's what we're asking.
Thank you. D'Amico.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Andrea D'Amico. I reside in Washington County. Ordinance 901 and 902 will shape the future of Washington County. Staff has performed an amazing undertaking. Washington County is 724 square miles, or 463, 552 acres. According to the Washington County SNR Program and Review Assessment of 2020, it states 500 acres of the original 2,400 acres of wildlife habitat remain. The staff estimated 300 of the 500 acres have potential for development. The language in 901 and 902 needs to protect and preserve the remaining SNRs. For example, 901, 902 says "as many as possible." It's too weak. How many knows? How many is possible? I have submitted pictures on mitigation, it's City of Beaverton, but, and pictures of an established SNR. They're directly across the street from each other. 99% of the plants have died. They've replanted them two years later, and they have died. It's a dumping ground that the city or the county will not pick up because it is not in the roadway. So it just sits there. And whatever's in those barrels continue to pollute the Tuolatin River because it feeds right into the stream that goes to the Tuolatin River. If we allow mitigation, number one, it's not equal to SNRs. You can't rebuild nature. And number two, there's no one that monitors it. 901 and 902 allows roads and bridges over SNRs in and out of the UGB. It's in 901, Exhibit 5, under Design Elements, 902, Section 422-22.2, which will displace wildlife, mutilate tree canopy. Land outside the UGB should have Goal Five protection, and I'm done.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us.
Next, Madam Chair, we have Ken Egan and Craig Chisholm.
Go ahead, Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me talk to you. I'm Craig.
That's Mr. Chisholm. It's okay.
I'm Craig Chisholm, in opposition to 901 and 902. I'm a retired real estate attorney. I was trained by OSU Extension, but speaking for myself as a master woodland manager. I hate to do it, but I've come to the party to tell you the emperor has no clothes. Tree codes don't work, at least in the long run. And the simplest reason, explanation, is you need to have the cooperation of the landowners. You put in tree codes, you destroy that. You won't get planting, you won't get care, they're out of the process. And if that is not there, in the long run, they won't work. Countries that know what they're doing, like Finland, they don't even look at these. So it's on the wrong path. If you look at a second thing, which is land use planning, I wasn't, that wasn't my area, but my buddies were in that area and roommates and so on, it's founded on sound economics. They're rather hard-headed thinking, going through land use planning. This isn't going to support Goal Five. This is going to go against Goal Five. It's not going to work. You have to understand the incentives of people. Happy to give you answers to questions. I have a vast amount of information I would yak on, but you don't have time.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Mr. Egan, I apologize.
No worries.
I yield my time to Mr. Egan.
Unfortunately, we don't have yielding.
I'm a Scot, so I...
But go ahead.
We know each other well.
Oh, very good.
I'm going to reiterate some things that I said to the planning commission earlier about requesting consideration of several things when it comes to adopting these ordinances, and especially in the close-in urban areas like where I live. I'm almost to the Longoma County line, and it's a heavily developed area. The ordinances, especially within long-established neighborhoods, would be adopted, in my case, with very little consideration of real science and what constitutes a significant natural resource area. They're mostly based on outdated aerial photos, which don't even reflect the devastation that was caused by the January freeze and the windstorm. Secondly, commissioners and legislators at every level constantly talk about protecting the middle class and then proceed to pass legislation and ordinances that crush them. Many of the people in this room, most likely, have the vast majority of their hard-earned assets tied up in the value of their homes. If you pass this ordinance, you will render many people's properties worthless, while at the same time your assessors will still be charging them the property taxes if the properties were still at full value. Speaking specifically about my property, virtually every shrub and tree was planted by me or the previous owner. And I'm asking you why the county thinks that its bureaucracy has a better ability to manage my property than I do with my responsible approach to that property. Thirty years ago, Lake Oswego implemented tree ordinances, and I said at the time people were going to die out there eventually, and it happened in January, and it happened in Portland, too. We need to encourage people to get rid of these giant killer trees. They crushed houses all over Lake Oswego, I mean, all over Raleigh Hills. My time's up.
Well, I have 10 seconds to comment on something you said.
No, sorry, that isn't the way it works.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have Eve Goldman and Isla Hoffler.
Eve, you're up next.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Eve Goldman, and I represent the Tuolatin River Keepers. Tuolatin River Keepers is a community-based organization that protects and restores the Tuolatin River watershed. TRK's advocacy on water quality and the overall health of the Tuolatin River leads us to closely monitor regulations that involve significant natural resources in Washington County. While we are encouraged by the efforts that Washington County is bringing to the county into compliance with Goal Five, TRK is concerned that proposed ordinances 901 and 902 do not adequately protect SNRs. Our first primary concern is the continued failure of several of the new rules to meet clear and objective standards for SNRs, both inside and outside the urban growth boundaries as required by Oregon Administrative Rules and Goal Five. Under the Oregon Administrative Rules, programs to achieve Goal Five, when a local government has decided to protect a resource site under an ESEE analysis, implementing measures applied to conflicting uses shall contain clear and objective standards. In an ESEE analysis, local governments must develop a program to achieve Goal Five for all significant resource sites, based on analyzing economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences. In CDC, Section 422-23 outlines requirements for enhancing degraded SNRs. The analysis, however, contains nebulous language and fails to provide clear and objective standards. For example, sections include a listing that as many existing native trees over six inches as possible shall be preserved, and rock and large trees are encouraged to be placed in water areas. What remains of our SNRs in Washington County are quickly diminishing. This is our opportunity to leave a legacy for resource protection in our county, and we ask that you ensure the proposed language of ordinances comply with clear and objective standards as legally required. Thank you.
Ms. Hoffler.
Hello. Thanks, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Here I am like a bad penny. I just wanted to say one thing, that Goal Five also addresses historic sites, and I don't see much of anything in these revisions to help the county identify historic properties within the county, even if they're in a city jurisdiction. Banks is a good example. The city neglected to realize the importance of a 150-year-old home, Wilkes House, and a simple demolition permit was issued by the county because the city told the county that there was no issues, and so it was destroyed. I think the county needs to have some sort of methodology to evaluate historic sites, even if the property owners have not registered them. And maybe you could start a program to actually do something where you compensate the owners and help them maintain it and keep it. I don't know how, but we need to save these homes instead of letting municipalities that have no recognition of them destroy them. You have one sitting here in Hillsborough next to the Amazon that is ready to be destroyed. Maybe you could look at that for a start and try to save it. Anyway, the second thing I wanted to mention is a riparian zone issue. East Fork Dairy Creek has a temporary pod village on it next to the Winco. It's my understanding that that was supposed to go away when Aloha and Cornelius were completed, and it's still there, sitting in a riparian zone. That is not okay. It needs to be removed immediately for multiple reasons. It's not compatible with the riparian zone, and it's not compatible with the park and recreation area next to it, where children play, and people on drugs and alcohol are passed out under the pavilions. Please take care of it under this Goal Five recommendation.
Once again, Ms. Goldman, congratulations on your bar achievement. Thank you. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Is Clinton Ricardi in the audience, signed up in advance?
Sir.
And then is there that Insless and Dale Fink? Please, you can join up there.
Do we still have Clinton Ricardi and Kenneth Dobson?
They are online, so we're...
Oh, okay, thank you. Please, go ahead. Yep.
I'm Clinton Ricardi. I've been a Washington County resident for 25 years. We live in... I'm Clinton Ricardi. I've been a Washington County resident for 25 years. We live in unincorporated Washington County. We live on an acre, but half of the acre is divided by Ash Creek and is this sensitive area that you're speaking to. The 20 years that we've lived there, multiple times, we've gotten letters, calls, visits from the county trying to reestablish what our property is. And as a homeowner, that's the problem, or the questions. I mostly just have questions about this whole process. The language that's used in this letter that I received seems very vague. It seems very open to interpretation, and it seems like there aren't very clear details in terms of how that would impact the homeowner. I would like to say thank you to all the people that did come up here earlier, because they brought up some really great points about people having their investments in their homes, the language, everything that people have brought up so far today, I think, is great. But it seems to me like some of these things have already been decided. And I realize that you haven't necessarily taken a vote yet, but it seems like we need more talk and more discussion before a decision can be made. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ricardi. Did I pronounce that right? Yes, our staff is here if you wish to talk with them outside of this testimony to try and answer questions relative to your letter. Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm...
Please. Go ahead. We just have a little trouble with administering the clock today. Thank you.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network. We had a board meeting last night, and we voted. They told me I need to come and make comments to you about the significant natural resources issue today. Three things I want to say. We, as a board, in February of 2018, sent you an email, and in that we said, "These Goal Five resources, significant natural resources, represent a small fraction of the land in Washington County, but they are irreplaceable as wildlife habitat and floodplain protection, in addition to the aesthetic and quality of life value that these resources bring to our county-wide people." So that was in 2018. Eve Goldman, representing now an attorney for Tuolaton River Keepers, sent you an email. She summarized that in two minutes. "We, as a board, last night, want to emphasize that we want you to seriously consider the details in her letter." Also, Jill Warren has worked really hard on significant natural resources, and she will make comments to you, I think. Later, you have written comments from her, and please seriously consider the details in those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Clerk Moss, who's next?
All right. That concludes the... In the auditorium, was there anyone else that wanted to testify on this public hearing that didn't get opportunity? Not seeing raised hands coming forward. We did have two members online, starting with Kenneth Dobson. Ken, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you. Chair Harrington, Commissioners, my name is Ken Dobson. I'm an attorney. I represent Jill Warren. And we concur with the other folks that believe that the decision to lightly limit development in upland significant natural resources is not a legacy we want to leave for future generations. In particular, we have concerns that the various exemptions and exceptions to the rules will swallow any real substantive protections. For example, if you have a property with a half acre of SNR on it, upland SNR, they can remove that without consequence. But you can have an SNR that straddles several different properties. You can have an SNR that is two acres in size and a half acre on each of the four properties it covers. You would allow the removal of that. So again, we believe that the exceptions to the protections will swallow any substantive protection for these resources. More importantly, I mean, that's your decision to lightly limit it, but you also have to comply with state law, including the needed housing statute and regulations, Goal Five regulations, that require that these rules be clear and objective. And I want to point out that the alternative path for tree protection, set forth in CDC 422-11.1, contains various language that is subjective, is the exact type of language that we're here today because of it, because it's going to, if you don't remove this, it's going to go to Luba. Specifically, under CDC 422-11.1, it provides an alternative tree protection standard by showing, quote, "How proposed mitigation will adequately compensate for or offset impacts." Similarly, you have CDC 422-11.3, that says, "The applicant's detailed environmental report shall demonstrate that A, the proposed development will avoid or minimize impacts to ecological functions and loss of habitat to the extent practical." This is the exact same type of language that caused Luba and the Court of Appeals to invalidate the prior Goal Five rules for the county for upland SNRs. So you really need to take a close look at that in any of your engrossments. You really need to remove those sections, 422-11.1, this alternative approach to protecting wildlife habitat.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
All right. Thank you.
Next, Madam Chair, we have Jim Long. Jim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, please go ahead.
Okay. My name's Jim Long. I'm representing CPO 4M. And we totally support some of the testimony you've heard today from Eve Goldman, Dale Feek, and others. We are concerned, we'd like to get a continuation of this hearing. There's been a lot of information that has come out, and instead of just moving it to engrossment, I think there's a good reason to ask for more testimony to give more details in response to this. The way the dynamics can work in a public hearing, if you hear what other people say, and that triggers other opinions and information. So I would like to get a continuation of this hearing before it goes to engrossment. We would like that. I think that Ken Dobson has a lot of particular items, and we did discuss this at the CCI and the CCI Steering Committee, and generally supportive of looking into the items that he's brought up. There are other habitats that have not been addressed, like the Oaks Savannah, the prairie, upland habitat, and some mixed deciduous trees, firs, native leaf. We agree with the Tuolaton River Keepers that the buffers could be expanded. We think that habitats on less than a half and smaller acres, how many half acres with SNRs are going to be protected? That's a good question. You should, as Commissioner, you should ask how many half acres with SNRs are going to be protected, or are not going to be protected. Again, we oppose it as currently written, and we want a continuation and then engrossment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Is there any other members on Zoom for the public that wish to testify on this public hearing? As you've heard a staff presentation, give you just a moment to your lives. Raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands. Chair Harrington.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Ricardi, that... Oh, no, you came in person. Thank you. All righty. So that concludes today's public hearing. And first, I have a couple of questions of staff. Do any other Commissioners have any questions at this time? Okay. Well, first, I have a process question. So who knows? Could be a legal question. So you let us know earlier that you have processed all of the testimony input that you've received prior to August 31, and that the items, the amendments that you have for us to act on in terms of engrossment today deals with all of the comments up to that date, correct?
They actually address some comments submitted after that. So the changes address everything that was addressed with the Planning Commission, and most of the comments that were raised today were also raised at the Planning Commission. There were two letters in your packet from a developer who had concerns with Middle Housing Land Division and how these regulations would affect that. We felt that there was a clarification that we could make, that we could offer as part of just clarifying language on how that would work for them, that I think made it a little clearer, that it's a simpler process than what they were thinking. So that is the one thing that we added in response to public comment.
Thank you. I was referring to the map request.
Okay, sorry. Sorry.
Yep. Nope. My problem there. So, thank you. So in terms of the process, we have those amendments that you're suggesting, that you're asking for engrossment today, as well as the staff recommendation to continue the hearing on the engrossed ordinances 901 and 902. Does that preclude any subsequent changes if, based upon the testimony you've heard today, I assume that you will, you've taken the input just as we have as part of the public hearing, and you'll take a look at that and see if there are recommendations that you want to make to us in subsequent meetings?
So at this point, we wouldn't have any other recommended changes. The way the engrossment process works, the board would order the engrossment based on the package of changes that you have here. And if any further changes were desired after that, it would go to a B engrossment. Yeah, so you would have to do the two hearings. Yeah, but that is a possibility, that if you heard other things or had additional concerns through the process, that a B engrossment could be possible.
But what I'm trying to allow for is that we would have the benefit of staff's analysis of the comments that we've heard here today, prior to our subsequent next public hearings on the A engrossed ordinances.
Yes, I think most of the comments are actually addressed in the staff report. There was one thing that we wanted to make sure that was on the record. We have heard from a couple of people, concerns that there were still provisions that weren't clear and objective. And we want to make it really clear that the rules allow that as long as we have a clear and objective path, that we may allow an optional discretionary path. They need to be optional at the choice of the person making the application. Section 422-9 is that clear and objective path. That requires a tree inventory and tree replacement points and all of that. So that is, it is very clear and objective, we believe. And so the sections that a couple of people have mentioned are those other discretionary paths. So you will see some language in there. As long as we have a clear and objective path, we can allow those others.
That's clear to me. Other Commissioners, you're all clear on that? Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Any other Commissioner questions? All right. Thank you very much. Well, at this juncture, I would like to ask for a motion to order the engrossment of ordinance number 901, as described in the staff report and shown in Attachment A.
I'm moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second as well. Clerk Moss, could you do the roll call on that, please?
Yes, I can, Madam Chair. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Treese?
Aye.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fai?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The engrossment of ordinance number 901 is approved unanimously, thereby creating a engrossed ordinance, 901. Do we have a motion to order engrossment of ordinance number 902 to reflect the changes described in the staff report and shown in Attachment B?
I'm moved.
We have a motion and a second. Although, excuse me. Clerk Moss, could you take the roll call, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Commissioner Treese?
Aye.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
No, I would like to continue.
Okay. Vice Chair Fai?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The motion carries four to one. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to continue the hearing on ordinance 901, a engrossed ordinance, and 902, a engrossed ordinance, to October 22 and November 5, 2024, and direct staff to prepare and mail notice of the amendments consistent with the requirements of Chapter 10 of the county charter.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. This one's a roll call vote, right?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Happy to do so.
Let's do a roll call, nonetheless.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Treese?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fai? Chair Harrington?
Yes. That motion passes unanimously, five to zero. And that is all we have for public hearings today, and congratulations to the team for bringing us that significant body of work. As you mentioned, it has involved considerable input, as well as process through the Planning Commission, and we appreciate all of that work. Next, we've come to the second public communication section of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to speak to us for up to five minutes, an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. Process question. Since we limited to 10 minutes, do you want to continue with that person and then continue with the one signed up at the end, or start with the list we have at the end, and then add the one from continued?
Well, actually, what I'd like to do, since we've been going for two and a half meetings, is take at least a five-minute break, and then we'll take care of that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
We agree with that. (laughter) We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. This one's a roll call vote, right?
Happy to do so.
Let's do a roll call, nonetheless.
Commissioner Rogers?
No, I would like to continue.
Vice Chair Fai? Chair Harrington?
The motion carries four to one. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to continue the hearing on ordinance 901, A engrossed ordinance, and 902, A engrossed ordinance, to October 22nd and November 5th, 2024, and direct staff to prepare and mail notice of the amendments consistent with the requirements of Chapter 10 of the county charter.
I'm moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. This one's a roll call vote, right?
Happy to do so.
Let's do a roll call, nonetheless.
Commissioner Willey? Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Treese?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fai? Chair Harrington?
That motion passes unanimously five to zero. And that is all we have for public hearings today, and congratulations to the team for bringing us that significant body of work. As you mentioned, it has involved considerable input, as well as process through the Planning Commission, and we appreciate all of that work. Next, we've come to the second public communication section of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to speak to us for up to five minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. Process question, since we limited to 10 minutes. Do you want to continue with that person and then continue with the ones signed up at the end, or start with the list we have at the end, and then add the one from continued?
Well, actually, what I'd like to do, since we've been going for two and a half meetings, is take at least a five-minute break, and then we'll take care of that question. Thank you. Commissioner Rogers? If you don't stop, we'll adjourn to a Zoom meeting. Okay, so, Commissioner Rogers made a suggestion, but he didn't make a motion, and these are the rules of procedure that we've gone over multiple times before. If you would like to make a motion, you have that opportunity to do so.
I would like to make that motion, just in consideration of everybody that's been waiting in the office to do that, give them their fair opportunity to speak, providing they don't have any more outbursts.
His motion is to revert to the five minutes per person, limited to 30 minutes, with the provision of, as I understood you to say, of no further outbursts.
Commissioner, well, the only issue I have, I don't have an issue with that, with part of that, but that would allow six people to speak.
Yes.
Well, if they'd like to divvy up the 30 minutes, and they can.
And that's why I tried to accommodate the minimum of eight who have already signed up, as well as those on Zoom. So hence, that was the accommodation.
My motion stands.
Okay.
I'll second his motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Would you like to vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Okay. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
All right, so we have Sarah Jenta. Next up, we have Jill Brandt, and Bob Terry is on deck.
Okay, I just ask one more question, Kevin.
You can ask it of the presiding officer.
Do we have more than six people signed up?
Yes, we do.
At this point in time, so.
Yes, we had eight people signed up, and we've already heard from one, and we may have people on Zoom.
So, Kevin, do we have anybody on Zoom?
We have six people on Zoom that potentially could raise their hands.
So, as the presiding officer, we had a motion to provide five minutes of testimony for up to 30 minutes, and we're going to proceed per that adopted motion. Thank you. Jill, welcome to go next.
Sarah is next.
Well, I heard Jill Brandt.
Sarah.
Sarah, and then, okay, does Sarah have a last name?
Jenta.
Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
My name is Sarah Jenta. I live in Washington County, and I've been a citizen and resident of Oregon for 39 years, first living here in 1988. I'm a volunteer and not an official spokesperson with United Sovereign Americans. Since time is limited, I will just highlight items on the document you are receiving. On page one, at the bottom, "Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act of 2002." Continuing on to page two before you at the top, "Whereas, an open-source audit of the Oregon 2022 general election conducted by Oregon state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 97,552 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Oregon State Voter Roll Database, 71,589 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 20,104 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election; no one knows who cast them, 71,573 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election; maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Oregon was only 16. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal." We're going to go to page three because of time limitations. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked secure ballots, similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Six, ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, an NIST-compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensic, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Let's skip down to number nine. Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded.
Would you like to read the subsequent, be it resolved?
My table partner will read that.
Okay. We'll reset the clock, then. Thank you very well read.
Board, thank you for your time. My name is Jill Brandt. I'm a U.S. citizen, and I've been a resident of Washington County for six and a half years. I am also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans and not an official spokesperson. Unfortunately, for lack of time, Sarah skipped number eight in the resolution, so I'll read it right now. It says, "If the total of all unique variances in numbers 1 through 7..."
The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Okay. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
All right, so we have Sarah Genta. Next up, we have Jill Brandt, and Bob Terry is on deck.
Okay, I just ask one more question, Kevin.
You can ask it of the presiding officer.
Do we have more than six people signed up?
Yes, we do.
At this point in time, so.
Yes, we had eight people signed up, and we've already heard from one, and we may have people on Zoom.
So Kevin, do we have anybody on Zoom?
We have six people on Zoom that potentially could raise their hands.
So as the presiding officer, we had a motion to provide five minutes of testimony for up to 30 minutes, and we're going to proceed per that adopted motion. Thank you. Jill, welcome to go next. Well, I heard Jill Brandt. Sarah, and then, okay, does Sarah have a last name? Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
My name is Sarah Genta. I live in Washington County, and I've been a citizen and resident of Oregon for 39 years, first living here in 1988. I'm a volunteer and not an official spokesperson with United Sovereign Americans. Since time is limited, I will just highlight items on the document you are receiving. On page one at the bottom. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act of 2002. Continuing on to page two before you at the top. Whereas, an open source audit of the Oregon 2022 general election conducted by Oregon state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 97,552 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Oregon State Voter Roll Database, 71,589 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 20,104 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election. No one knows who cast them. 71,573 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Oregon was only 16. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. We're going to go to page three because of time limitations. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked secure ballots, similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Six, ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, an NIST-compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified insured and bonded security, forensic, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Let's skip down to number nine. Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded.
Would you like to read the subsequent, be it resolved?
My table partner will read that.
Okay. We'll reset the clock then. Thank you, very well read.
Board, thank you for your time. My name is Jill Brandt. I'm a U.S. citizen, and I've been a resident of Washington County for six and a half years. I am also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans and not an official spokesperson. Unfortunately, for lack of time, Sarah skipped number eight in the resolution, so I'll read it right now. It says, "If the total of all unique variances in numbers one through seven above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records." I won't read any more of the resolution at this time, but we do want to draw your attention to page four, as you referenced, Chair Harrington. And it is a place where each of you can indicate your support or non-support of this resolution, followed by your signature. And we'll come back to this page later. So let's go on to the next page, page five. Five is an appendix to the resolution, and it gives the research sources for the open source audit by Oregon citizens and a list of relevant laws applicable to an end-to-end audit. We have also attached, for your review, on the next two pages, two scorecards which summarize the answers to questions one through four on page one of the resolution. So the first appendix is number one, Oregon's 2022 General Election Validity Scorecard, and the last one, Washington County's 2022 General Election Validity Scorecard. This particular scorecard for Washington County gives a summary of the United Sovereign American Oregon citizens' findings concerning the four tenets listed on page one of the resolution. While we don't have time right now to review all of the possible ballot errors listed here, I would like to draw your attention to just the last one. It's on the very last page, and it's number four all the way down at the bottom. The question is, was the number of ballots in error valid according to the Help Americans Vote Act of 2002? By law, in order for an election to be deemed valid and certifiable, it must perform within the allowable machine error rate of one per 10 million ballot positions or one in 125,000 ballots, which means that Washington County is allowed two errors. According to the research, the unique Washington County possible voting violations in the 2022 general election are 9,227, which means that Washington County appears to have had 9,225 more errors than the law allowed in 2022, meaning that the election was not valid and should not have been certified. Clearly, the Secretary of State did not follow the law, and our county acquiesced. Since Washington County has home rule per our Oregon Constitution and county charter, Washington County must separate from the state elections so that we can ensure legally valid elections for our county citizens. We want to ensure that our 2024 general election complies with the law and is certifiable. Therefore, we need to address these concerns, certainly before the ballot certification of our next election. This powerfully written resolution outlines massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Oregonians. In fact, the resolution cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the voting system, which controls one of our most vitally important rights, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate or trustworthy result. These anomalies within our election system should not continue to be ignored. The erosion of public trust in our election system is detrimental to the political and social well-being of our state. Will you now please turn back to page four of the resolution and indicate your support, or non-support if you choose? But we hope that you support this resolution, and we'd like you to indicate your support, followed by your signature. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Next, Madam Chair, we have Bob Terry and Elaine Woods, followed by John Woods and Ilha Hoffer.
Go ahead, Mr. Terry.
Good afternoon now. Thank you all very much for your attention. I'll be very brief. I hope not have to use the five minutes. But first, I'd like to say that, encourage you to understand that the group that is here are almost all elected citizens, just as you five are up there. It's very important you understand that. We are elected citizens by our precincts and by our neighborhoods. Beyond that, we are here friendly. We hope to get your attention and your direction in helping us help you to understand some of the things that are going on, like you just heard and the previous two people before me, and then earlier today at the beginning of the session. And there is a lot more to come. And I will go into that just briefly. The staff at the Elections Office is super. We have no problem with them. We totally understand. They are following directions either from the five of you or from the state, and they're doing their job the best that they can, as directed and followed. However, what you may not understand is your state, and your county in particular, is operating against both federal and state law as written. And we could be happy to share those with you if we had the time. Beyond that, I want to tell you I think its improved ballot boxes is great. They look nice, they look stronger, they're lockable, and their access for deposits has improved considerably. Those are great things, but it goes much farther beyond that. We need for real-time viewing, as Commissioner Rogers mentioned earlier. We used to have it over on Murray Boulevard, and I have been in other counties in recent elections where they're much better than ours. We can't, we as people cannot see what's going on in the elections at all. It's a joke to put us all in a tin room with five TV cameras that are not showing everything, nor can you hear anything that's going on. It's a joke. The majority. Electronic voting systems are but one of the vulnerabilities in the election system. The greatest weakness is with the central election voting rolls being managed out of Salem, not out of Washington County. And further to that point, the new number as bad votes from DMV is now over 800,000. And whether this county has been included in that or had even had a chance to look at it yet, I don't know. That came out over this weekend. It's up to 800,000. It should be looked at. The Certification Electronics Assistance Commission that is established is a volunteer voting system that was referred to by Dan and Joe earlier today. The most recent standards were established in 2021, so they are three years old. That is a long time. And in the world of cybersecurity, it's just countries are, our banks and our militaries are getting hacked. And you think, "We're not getting hacked here"? It's a joke. The testing lab of BVNV had let their own certification lapse in 2017. So our country's voting system was technically not certified in 2020, and we are not sure where it is today in 2024. It's just unbelievable. The truth is that all electronic systems are hackable. Electronic security is an illusion. So referred to as stated by our own Senator Wyden, also by our own state attorney general. Both have stated that, or something very similar to that. We need to recognize it and work. We are friendly, wanting to work with you to show you where the anomalies are. We are asking you to give us that work session time or call it whatever kind of time you want, so we can show you a lot of data and a lot of information. It's important that you do do that. We will not relentlessly let up. We had a little less than 100 people here today, but I want to tell you, your current, one of your current commissioners and an elected commissioner come over in January, attended one of our meetings where we had 155 people present. We put out 150 chairs and added chairs. So it was actually more than that, because we added 30 chairs. We also have had, we also have about 500 people who have signed up that they're willing to come here with us, with you five. We don't want to do that. We want to do it on a friendly basis. We want to work with you, work with your Elections Office. But the demonstration we seen earlier today is not necessary, and it's clearly not what we want.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know I went over it, I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Ms. Woods, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Elaine Woods, and I have been a resident of Washington County since 2011. I wanted to speak to the election observations that were possible even in the prior election office on Murray Boulevard. Before, at that time, we were able to sit behind, to the side a little bit, of the signature verification and other processes in the election verification process. And during that time, we were able to speak up to the person on the computer to ask them to double-check or wait pause so that we could observe the signatures more accurately. And they cooperated nicely until it was approaching the end of the election time. And so there were hundreds and thousands of ballots coming in. And so when we spoke up at that time, they said, "I'm sorry, we're back, we're behind schedule. We need to process." And they just passed through every ballot, no matter what the signatures were. And that was not right. And now, we're in a separate room with cameras, watching the cameras that are far away so that it's impossible to see what's really going on, because some of, like, three or four of those cameras were on the same position, but there were other places where there were cameras that we could not observe. And so it is very difficult to check on the election and how it's going. As we heard from our first speaker, it's only gotten worse. I encourage you, our county commissioners, to respond to your constituents whom you represent. We just want to talk with you. But there is one more problem that seems just happened like yesterday. Verizon was down without power for, I'm not sure how long, it was at least an hour. And so if that were to happen while our elections are going forward in transferring data or trying to transfer data to the state offices, it would just mess up our elections totally. So I hope that you allow time for us to speak with you in a work session or whatever is convenient to you, so we can have dialogue and conversation with you. As Bob has mentioned, we're very much in favor of working with you and not opposing you. So thank you for this opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Clerk Moss, who's next?
Right, and next, we have John Woods and Ilha Hoffer. And Madam Chair, we have 11 minutes left of the 30 minutes.
Thank you.
Chair Harrington, my name is John Woods. I'm a 12-year Washington resident. During the years when we had sailing ships, the captain and the first mate were tasked to recognize the signs of the weather. What you saw this morning was just a small part of what's going on in Washington County. We have people who are focused on election integrity. In Washington, the safe, transparent verification of elections is your responsibility, not the election division's. You guys lead the county. That thing is coming. Judicial Watch is looking. Other organizations, national organizations, are looking into Washington County to see what's going on. The responsibility for all of that is going to land on you, not the election division, because they just do what they say, what you tell them to do. It's not going to land on them because they can say, "We were just told what we need to do." My final thought. Organizations are focused here. We need to clean this thing up before they get in and look at it. It seems to me that you should prepare, clean the voter rolls, figure out what's going on in the elections, and make it so that they don't focus on Washington County like they are now. And what you're seeing is this bunch of people, and it's just going to grow and grow and grow. And you're going to have more of these meetings than you can possibly imagine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Ilha Hoffler, 50-year resident of Washington County. Thanks for hearing me again, Commissioners and Chair. I kind of have a little different note on this. Basically, what I want to say is the beginning of all the problems is when we went to mail-in voting. That should be restricted to disabled military and out-of-country people only. If we went back to precinct voting, of which I am a PCP, District 301, and in the old days, we had no problem. We were like the whole country of France who managed to get their elections done in one day. So why can't our county do the same? We used to have precinct voting. Your name was on a roster. You came in, you probably knew the person registering you. They knew you. You showed your ID, and you filled out your ballot, and it was given to counters. And there was none of this validation, machine issues, who's losing the chain of custody. It was all done in your precinct with community that you trusted. And mail-in voting is nothing but the ability to take away diversity. Let our precincts handle our voting. Lead us to our chain of custody and bring things in. The centralization of voting is the biggest mistake, and this is so fiscally irresponsible. We don't need machines. We have volunteers. We have great citizens in this county. Let this county be a role model of what we can do and have clean voter rolls, people that know each other. Those getting togethers for voting days were exciting. You talked with people before and after. You knew folks, and you were happy to be a citizen that voted. That's the way Americans work, and that's what we need to get back to. And we can keep our polls open for 16 hours so that people that have to work two jobs to be able to afford to live in this county can have a chance to vote. And just let us precinct people take responsibility for our citizens who want to vote. And believe me, non-citizens are not going to show up because they'll be known and not known. That's how community works. We know each other. And we will take, if people want to become citizens, let them come and be citizens. But you don't vote till you're a citizen. That is going to be your biggest challenge now in this county. How are you going to prove citizenship? You don't register people to vote through the Oregon Health Plan or the DMV or online. That is contaminating elections. You are choosing vulnerable people, and that's not okay. We need to have in-person voting, valid and reliable process. You are a home-rule county. Your purview can be just this. We don't need to have Internet contaminating our voting, and we don't need to have duplications, dead people, out-of-state people voting, all of which we've confirmed, by the way, by doing our canvassing. We found it ourselves. So please, I'm not saying I don't want to work with you, but we need to work on it now, and we need to get back to what we can do as citizens in our own communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person, Madam Chair, includes is Dale Feak.
And while we're waiting for Mr. Feak to come up, I'll just say for those, including who may be on Zoom, that may not have the opportunity to fit within this 30-minute timeframe, do feel free to.
timeframe, do feel free to send your testimony in using the email address bcc@washingtoncountyor.gov. You can send us an email there anytime. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I sent you an email early this morning, and there are some links in that email. I think, Jerry, Commissioner Willie, maybe you've read it already. That's great.
3 o'clock in the morning, Dale.
Yeah, no, I went and took a nap afterwards, though. I followed what we talked about, yeah. On June 4th, I emailed you, Counting Commissioners, and Mayor Wenzel and Mayor Callaway a transcript of Ken Burns' keynote address at Brandeis University, which he said, "For 50..." Ken Burns is the, 50 years he's done historical things like baseball, Civil War, Brooklyn Bridge. He's renowned and highly respected by any scholar. He said, "For 50 years now, I have diligently practiced and rigorously tried to maintain a conscious neutrality in my work, avoiding advocacy if I could, trying to speak to all of fellow citizens. Over these many decades, I've come to understand a significant fact, that we are not condemned." This brings me to a moment. "I dreaded and forces me to suspend my longstanding attempt at neutrality. There is no real choice this November. There is only the perpetuum, perpetuation, however flawed and feeble you might perceive it, of our fragile 249-year-old experiment, or the entropy that will engulf us if we take the other route, the other route being the presumptive Republican nominee is the opioid of all opioids, an easy cure for what some believe is the solution to our many pains and problems, when in fact with him you end up re-enslaking with an even bigger problem, a worse affliction, and an addiction, a bigger delusion. We are at an existential crossroads in our political and civic lives. This is a choice that cannot be clearer. Remember what Louis Brandeis said: Vote." That was what I wrote to you in October, June of 2024, and I received another email from Ken Burns, as he said, "I spent five decades making films that tell the stories of America's greatest challenges, from the Civil War to the Dust Bowl, from the Second World War to Vietnam War. Each of these historic moments, we were challenged to live up to the essential promise of our nation, preserving a democratic system of government that respects the rights and addresses and addresses the needs of all the citizens. Today, challenges to our republic are rampant once again. The democratic values that make up the very fabric of our nation are under assault and at risk of unraveling. It's never been more important to safeguard our fragile democracy, and as Benjamin Franklin said so wisely, 'A republic if you can keep it.'" But this election is not just about keeping Donald Trump out. It's about coming together, protect our shared American values, and restoring integrity to our government. That's why electing leaders to the Senate that we can be proud of is so important, and why we have to have help from Elisa Slotkin, hold Michigan's Senate seat for Democrats for all. And I know some of you are not Democratic in registrations. Some of you may be independent, some may be libertarian, and maybe something else. But we are looking at an existential threat to our democracy, so you really have to take a look at what you value and how you're going to vote. So there is a link here for you if you want to donate to the Senate race that can make a difference, and I expect the people back me behind me are going to do this. I'm sure they will. Yeah, yeah. And I had a good chance to talk with Bob Terry before the meeting started, and we like each other. We just disagree politically. We really do, okay? So I really encourage you to really think about and act upon what Ken Burns says. Thank you.
Clerk Maz, have we reached the 30-minute target timeframe, or do we have time for one more?
No, we have reached our 30 minutes, Madam Chair.
All right. So once again, if you didn't get to speak today, and that includes folks who were hoping to testify via Zoom, please do feel free to send your testimony to bcc@washingtoncountyor.gov. That brings us to board announcements. So as usual, I'll announce the upcoming meetings. This Thursday, October 3rd, we have a roundtable starting at 9:00. Next Tuesday is a full work session day, starting at 9:00 a.m. That's October 8th. The following Tuesday, Tuesday, October 15th, we'll have a work session that starts at 9:00. It will reconvene later in the day, and a board meeting that starts at 10:00. Then on Tuesday, October 22nd, we'll have a work session that starts at 1:00 p.m. and a board meeting in the evening at 6:30 p.m. Are there any other board announcements for today? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting for this day, October 1st, 2024? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, 5 to 0. It is now 1:25. We will close for our lunch break and reconvene in work session at 2:25, and then proceed with our posted agenda. Thank you. We are adjourned.